Like to call to order the Planning and zoning commission meeting for December 7th, 2022, roll call.
Orell.
Here.
Budke.
Here.
Kuhn.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Maticek.
Here.
Madsen.
Here.
Reichert.
Here.
Sandy.
She's supposed to be on Zoom. If she, maybe she's not on yet.
Wasfik.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Reading approval from the minutes from the November 2nd meeting, Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
They actually will be forwarded.
We'll get those to you next. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't keep reading. We're gonna cancel your deal, we're gonna forward those because they're not included in the packet, and we apologize. Public hearings, final approvals, petitions, and changes.
Item 3-1, amendment to the Grand Forks Comprehensive Plan to Include the 2045 Transportation Plan Update: Alternatives, Transportation Modes, Element Transit.
Mr. Brooks.
This is final approval, last month Stephanie with the MPO was here, gave a presentation. Terry Kubo with the MPO is here today as well, certainly able to answer any questions. Think we put the presentation in the packet, but any questions about the plan itself, I'll turn it over to Terry. This one is a public hearing, it is part of our long-range plan, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Anything for Mr. Brooks? Basically, then it's up to us.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. Nothing for Mr. Brooks, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience would like to step up and address item 3-1, do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert? Second by Mr.?
Second.
Whoop, second by Ms. Orell, I'll give it to her since she's off. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3-1 passes, 3-2.
Item 3-2, sign appeal for Town &amp; Country Mall located at 1707 South Washington Street.
Ms. Edwardson.
Good evening, we're right across from Grand City's Mall, corner 17th and Washington. The complex is looking to update, or the owners are looking to update the facade of the strip mall, and part of that upgrade includes the renovation of the existing sign. You can see it's a bit dated, and so looking for some reinvestment and revitalization in the area. So with that, they're requesting a sign appeal as the property would be allowed a 15-foot-high sign, 18-foot wide, given that it's along a 35 mile an hour roadway. We recognize that that may be a little bit limiting compared to what the existing sign was, so staff's recommendation of a compromise was go to the next larger commercial center ground monument sign for complexes that would be of the same size along a 40 mile an hour roadway, which would be a 20-foot height, 20-foot wide maximum, 30% digital, and 360 total square feet. They're requesting and meeting all those recommendations of the staff recommendation except the height, they are requesting to maintain the existing sign height of 25 feet, staff's recommendation being to pull that back down to 20 feet just for consistency of what other complexes would be permitted and allowed without an appeal. So that's a quick summary, and the developer and the owner is here as well to answer any questions you might have, but from the code standpoint and things like that, the proposal does include a 30% digital here as you can see, and then static signs changes on the bottom. So with that, I could answer any questions you might have. I will also add the 20 feet, developers looking to utilize the existing support structures within the existing pole, the two poles that run along the sign, and that can be reduced to meet the 20-foot if that's the desire of the commission, but they'd like to utilize that internal structure to move forward, so.
Mr. Reichert. So, this is for a commercial center, so like a strip mall sort of?
A multi-tenant, yep.
So, does it just require two tenants? Is there a, I mean, could they, if there were two strip malls there, could they put two signs up of this size?
It would be based on the property and the size of the property, so if they had two different buildings on one property, they would still be allowed one commercial center.
Okay.
You're allowed multiple ground monuments depending on multiple corners and a certain, the second has to be 50% and 75% inside, I knew I was gonna get that wrong. So you can have multiple, just one commercial center at the full allowance is allowed.
And it seems like there's a lot of other signs on Washington that are more than 20 feet high, are those?
There's a difference between a ground monument, which is structured all the way from the bottom, and like a, I believe it's a pylon sign where it's the pole mounted in the air.
Right.
So there's difference there.
Okay.
So your McDonald's or your Taco Bell's, those are all pylon signs, not a traditional ground monument where it's signage fully from the ground up.
Okay, thank you. So we're kind of almost changing from a half pylon to a ground monument. Any other questions, I don't know if we have a public hearing on this also?
I guess my only concern is that this thing's in the middle of the drive lane, and now we're blocking more sightlines through the sign, so is that gonna be addressed in some way to better?
The location of the sign is proposed to stay where it is, to utilize that existing support structure, as well as this site is kind of odd in that many years ago when the state widened the right-of-way in this area, they took a portion of this parking lot for state right-of-way, and so that's why you'll see the yellow highlighted area on the screen is the actual property boundaries, and you can see their existing parking lot extends beyond that. They have an agreement with the state to continue to utilize that parking until the state deems it necessary to expand South Washington Street, and so they can't get any closer and modify it that way because of that, and so the location on site is kind of restricted as well as the cost to try to utilize that existing structure.
So if they, if they would widen Washington, then that would be non-conforming, I assume, right? They wouldn't?
No, you can.
Be right up to the edge?
You can be right up to the edge as long as there's an easement along the property line, we haven't taken any such easements yet, and so it, right now, there wouldn't be a non-conforming aspect for that.
Because I'd hate to have them put a brand-new sign up, and then we tell them I have to move it in five years or something.
When the state widens the roadway, their parking lot discussion would have to change anyway, and so that whole scale renovation impacts, the sign would just be one piece of a major redesign of that parking lot. State has no intentions, as far as I'm aware, to widen it at this point, so that would be a future concern, should that ever happen.
Okay, I guess I'll open the public hearing, anybody in the audience like to step up and address? 3-2, please do so at this time.
Do you guys have anything to add, or?
Just to point a clarification on this, I don't.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Robert Rydell, 620 10th Avenue South. I wasn't sure, my hearing is not perfect, but if it was already stated, but the sign that exists currently is wider than what we're proposing, so the height wants to remain the same, that's what we're proposing, at 25 feet. I don't know the width of it, but the width of it is going to narrow up by a couple of feet. You know, Alex had mentioned the drive line, so that's actually gonna get better, even though it will go lower, it will be narrower, so you'll be able to go around it better.
That's my only comment, I just want to make sure everybody understood that. Thank you.
So, Bob, it goes from 18, it looks like, to 12'8, kind of what I'm seeing, or 15' foot total on the ground, 12'8 in the air?
Yeah, that sounds right, so, I mean, a fair amount narrower.
Yeah, you got five, six feet.
Any other questions of me?
Any questions for Mr. Rydell?
Oh, thank you very much.
Not seeing any, thank you. Brings it back to us. So the actual appeal is to go with the 25 feet?
The actual appeal is to also approve them going to the 40 mile an hour roadway allowances, 30% digital with a higher square footage, that's staff's recommendation to increase to, if you would like to go further than that, their request is to go to the 25 foot.
So you guys want? You guys want to keep it at 20 feet?
Correct, the Grand City's.
Oh, they do, I was, you guys, I was mistaken, which you guys.
It's still an increase of five feet over the height of what they had, it's what Grand City's Mall would be permitted by right to have as well, and so just trying to keep things consistent across different properties of this type, that's our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rydell, why do you need the extra five feet high? Come on up.
Why do I need the extra five feet?
Please state your name and.
Joe Gack. The reason we're keeping it, or trying to keep it the same height of 25 feet is because of two existing pylons and electrical that are there. The architect who drew it up said, if you keep it the same way and utilize the existing structure, it'll work out at 25 feet, so that's why we wanted to keep it there.
Same height? So it's just a?
It's the same height as it is right now.
Right.
It would be the same height going forward.
But it's because of the electrical or not?
Pardon me?
You could just cut that out before me.
I'm sorry.
No.
Oh.
Yeah, when you go all the way to the ground.
Yeah, exactly. Bob Rydell again, I just have something to add to that, we're just trying to be grandfathered in at the current height, also, the percentage of area that we can use for the digital display, which is gonna be at the top of it, and then the remaining footage for the underneath, there's several different tenants in there, we just, if we go short, we don't feel like we have a very big display for the individual tenants' names there, so having an extra five feet gives us a little bit more marquee space for the various tenants that are renters in the property. That's our primary concern, and just trying to be grandfathered in, keeping it the same, not asking to, we're asking to increase it over what the rules are, but we're not asking to increase it over what's been there for the last 25 or so years, so we just want to keep it the same as it is, and narrow. Thank you.
Ben?
So is the digital display just strictly for tenants, there's no other advertising or anything like that?
No, just for the tenants that are in the space.
That would be a requirement, you couldn't advertise something not on that premise.
Yeah, but it isn't gonna be bringing up like, I don't know, anything specific, this special this week or something is kind of what it's gonna be, that type of thing?
Well, it'd be for like, the ski and bike shop who's a tenant, if they wanted to advertise their Christmas special, for example, you know, buy a tire, get a tire free, they can do it.
Sure.
But it's just for everybody that belongs there.
Any further questions? Close the public hearing, bring it back to us, again. Mr. Reichert. I'm gonna move approval for the staff recommendation of 20 feet by 20 feet, or just to go to the larger, not to go to the 25 feet high. I'll second that. Mr. Lunskey, second that. Any further discussion? I know I'm always kind of the sign Nazi, but on this one, it's kind of there existing, and I don't know if I care about the 25 feet, I'm usually the other way. I'm worried about what happens when people across the street and every strip mall with two tenants in it all of a sudden comes back and says they want. Ms. Orell, Ms. Sandy, I have trouble knowing if you're chiming in or not, I don't know if you two have to want to say anything during our discussion.
Yes, this is Jenny, my only thought would be, you know, is there an option to do, to do the grandfather clause, I don't think anything going forward necessarily needs to change, remains at the 20 feet, but if it's grandfathered, I guess I would have less of an issue. That would just be my, my input there.
Ms. Sandy?
Yeah, I guess I kind of agree with Jenny, I don't see, if they want to put in a new sign and make it look nicer, I don't know that we should take away what they already have.
Mr. Budke?
Yeah, so, I guess clarification then, so the request is to go to 25 feet tall, does that, how long does that last? Like, does that go with the property in any meaningful way? Like, how, how long are we of?
Do appeals go with the signs or with the property? They would run with the sign, so it would, till such time that that sign would be modified, it could continue to remain and be maintained at the 25 foot.
Yep.
When that were to come down and something else to be replaced, it would need a variance again to construct something new.
Right. Okay. Unless, or follow the code, whatever. Right, right.
And I should say, as far as the precedence comment and the grandfathering, other complexes would be limited to that 20 foot if they're all along the 40 mile an hour, anything over that would require a sign appeal to the same process to grant, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, can I say something quick?
Please.
So with that, we wouldn't need to worry about new signs going up, or does everyone, are there other signs on that road that are at 25?
I couldn't verify that.
Yeah, actually, across the way, there's.
What, are there ground monument signs, or a pylon? I think most of the ones along the corridor have adopted the pylon, as this area, South Washington, is still kind of in that area of height and visibility, it's not till we get farther south that we start looking at ground monuments. The Franzen's probably a 20-foot, or maybe even less than that. So I don't think there's a ton of multi-tenant signs above a 25.
How high is that monstrosity gonna be that we just approved?
At Valley Dairy.
At Valley Dairy, and then we just approved one at, over the hot tub spa place.
But keep in mind, those are billboards, and it.
I get it.
Considered a different animal.
And I voted no. And those are meant to get up higher so that they're, you know, up above the, yeah. We didn't want those blocking the on-premise. Throwing it out there. Had to get one more dig in on that one.
And how tall are those? I don't recall.
We have, yep, we have a motion in a second.
No, she asked how tall.
Oh, I thought you said let's call for a vote, I'm sorry. Forty-two comes to mind, maybe, I can't remember for sure, but I want to say they were 42 high, definitely higher than this.
Yeah.
If they wanted five more feet than what they have, I probably would struggle. If they're trying to replace what they have, I'm kind of gonna agree with Ms. Sandy and Ms. Orell. Mr. Reichert? I'll move to amend, to add the five feet. Mr. Lunskey, would you? Yeah, I'll move approval on that. You'll second that? Yep. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Budke?
So just to clarify, this, the motion is now to approve the developers' requests, their variance requests?
Yes. Okay, further discussion, seeing no hands, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 100%. 3-3. Item, Jane?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Item 3-3, replat of Lot C, Block 2, Business Park, Third Resubdivision, and Lot D, Block 2, of the replat of Lot B, Block 2, Business Park, Third Resubdivision, renamed to Business Park, Fourth Resubdivision, to the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota, located at 2755 South 48th Street.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, so this is in our Business Park area, interstate's over here, we're on the west side, we've dealt with a couple replats here through, through the years, been probably new for you, this is the lot that's just west of Midco that went up recently, and what's happening here is it's just a simple replat with the lift station lot here, they're gonna take this southern half of the lift station lot, they're actually gonna build this driveway in, into their site, and encompass in this 2755 with the additional driveway space. It's a pretty simple replat from our perspective, and we're recommending approval and moving forward. The city is selling this growth fund lot off, we already have a purchase agreement pending the replat.
Okay, we do have a public hearing too, but any questions for Mr. Brooks before I open that up? Not seeing any, I'll open the public hearing, anybody in the audience like to step up and address 3-3, do so at this time. Seeing no one, close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Moved by, moved by Mr. Reichert, was that Mr. Kuhn? Second by Mr. Kuhn, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes even nicely. 3-4.
Item 3-4, vacation of sidewalk easement in South Pines addition between 5048 and 5052, South Pines Court.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, so I'll kind of have to give a little bit of a history lesson on, on where we're at on this development. Here's South Pines Court, which is along Cherry Street, south of 47th. The homes that essentially cut the line here were built right after the flood, kind of came in, this area developed, at that time, this was a large farm field with nothing kind of going on, and we built up 49th, we had South Pines here, we weren't sure what was gonna connect on the backside, at that time, we had 49th scheduled to go through, in addition, we did some pedestrian access pieces, one of them which is located along here. What subsequently happened, and some of you were maybe here for that, Hugo's Development purchased here, the neighborhood was very concerned about a connection with that higher intense commercial use, and so at that time, lots of meetings here for those who were involved, we put a hammerhead here at the end of 49th, and at that time, we just kind of left the sidewalks alone, we didn't have a connection in to the townhome development here. So this sidewalk, which was in, in 2000, probably right after these were built, the sidewalk, I think went back to a 2009 photo recently, even 06, you can see that this sidewalk's there, looking for a home to connect that to into the future, but we didn't know that we were gonna put a townhome development here, and there was gonna be a desire to separate out these areas. So once that occurred, we really don't have a connection for the folks in this neighborhood to head over here to any meaningful location, it really just becomes this one-way piece. The applicants here are owners, and they've been working with their neighbor, they're looking to remove this sidewalk, which really doesn't allow them to enter into their neighbor's location, it kind of becomes this dead-end sidewalk as it sits. Right now, I think today, there is a gate on the end of this, and it's kind of cut off, somebody can open up that gate and come through today, but they're just looking to have this, since it isn't part of a larger connection, looking to have that removed. The applicants are here as well, can certainly answer any questions that you may have, the desire in the end will be, sidewalk will get removed and seeded into their yard.
Okay, Mr. Reichert. Did, did we, we don't do like a community notification by chance, do we?
We will as part of this process, yes.
Oh, we will, okay, so we'll talk to the people on the other side of the gate?
I think they already have been, the, the Townhome Association, I believe, has been notified, I think the applicants did reach out to them as well, I don't know if they received any negative feedback from the, from that association.
But we will notify them?
Yes, they have been notified.
Oh, they have been, okay.
And they will as part of our public hearing, we do public hearing into, I'd have to get the full schedule, but that'll happen in the future, provided this moves forward.
Mr. Maticek, did you have something? Yeah, the black strip down the middle, is that a, is that a utility easement?
The, the black line here is the property line between these two parcels.
It's just a shadow. Okay, it's not a bike path or utility easement or anything?
There is a utility easement as part of this, which will remain in place.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I know where the site, I'm just concerned about what the black strip is all the way up.
There is, there is a utility easement on the backside of here as well, and then there'll be, the utility easement between here will remain, but it will, the pedestrian.
So in other words, if somebody wanted to walk there, they're in somebody's backyard?
Right, yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? I guess I can, Mr. Budke?
Thanks, Ryan, for going back through some of the history, but I guess I'm still kind of confused as to, like, why, when the townhome development happened, at that point in time, the sidewalk, the easement, all of that was a fact, and so, like, was, why was there no consideration? How does it happen that we just end up with like a dead end for one of these?
That, you know, at that time, I think we, we had looked at doing connections, both vehicular, pedestrian, but at that time, it was, the negotiation was to not connect those two. This pedestrian way was already in place, but the desire was to no longer have them connect, we kind of left this one alone at that time, the pedestrian, we did accommodate for the street, because of course you had to, we needed that going up to here, we needed a turnaround area for garbage trucks and fire and those types of things, but we didn't do anything with the sidewalk for pedestrian, and we probably should have at that time, we just.
I think we looked at it, Ryan, if you back up, go back up, if you look at the hammerhead, there was a concession of land there that the developer, and so everything shifted down, so that didn't line up with an open space, I kind of remember this one.
Yeah, I can't remember.
You know what I mean, everything, because we had to get a concession of land with the hammerhead there, and the developer had to give up, and so there was a, nothing lined up, I think at the end of the day.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'll just add, like, I think every time one of these has come forward, this, like, I've voted against it, I feel very strongly about these pedestrian easements and having the access, so the fact that this was in the design to begin with, great, and then it just doesn't get executed for the second half is frustrating.
Yeah, and I think that there would have been a lot of things that just, we didn't envision Hugo was going there, we didn't, and, you know, there's a lot of things that we just didn't know at the time. I also, I should, I lack to point out the, there is a connection in terms of Cherry Street, or I'm sorry, the, from Cherry Street across, there is along the north side of the drainway, a good pedestrian facility that does lead all the way over to Washington, and even if you see where this comes out, having this distance, it, there is a little bit of a jolt for somebody over here, but from somebody over here, you wouldn't be able to get across without crossing somebody else's property, so, yeah, I get it, but we can get out to Washington, you just have to come down to the, to the drainway, we do have a public facility there that's built. Ideally, it would have been something that would have dropped to the south here.
Thank you, Mr. Lunskey? Yeah, it's tough to tie that sidewalk in when that whole development there has no sidewalks at all, right? So, that's kind of a little bit oversight there.
Oh, the curd circle?
Yeah, it's all the private development, it's all just driveways, private road. Okay, well, I think I'll open up the public hearing, and anybody in the audience like to step up, address item 3-4, do so at this time. I don't see any, so, Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sandy, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you, 3-4 passes, 3-5.
Item 3-5, conditional use permit, small animal crematorium in B3 zone at 2612 Gateway Drive, applicant requests to take for one, to table for one month.
So moved by, second?
Second.
Mr. Reichert? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Tabled. Item 4, communication preliminary approvals, none, reports from the planning department.
Thank you, so we do have the calendar there, the one date we want to point out is our recommendation on the July 12th for our July meeting, we would move that back to July 12th to stay away from the 4th of July holiday, we usually end up in that situation every year, so, that will not set anything back, because we'll still be able to make that next Monday meeting, it's a little bit of a quick turnaround with us to finance, but it wouldn't set anything back in terms of approval, so, that's just laying out your schedule, hoping to see a lot of nods on the July meeting. lot of nods on the July meeting. If we don't, then we can certainly have a discussion on that.
I think that works best every year, that we try to do that.
Okay.
There's my nod.
We will follow through, yeah. The, oh, go ahead. The, the other thing I was going to mention, discussion of election of officers, that happens in January, just wanted to keep that on everybody's radar, so we'll have to have elections next month. The only other business that we have is.
On that note?
Yeah.
Just to interrupt you?
Yes.
Which I just did. If anybody wants to get off of the executive, whatever committee, or wants to get on, I guess, think about that for next time. I'll just, go ahead, Ryan, just stating that.
Yep, thank you. And, and if you have questions on any of the positions, you can certainly talk to us or the current folks. And if anybody's not wanting to run for their position, maybe by next month, let us know, or find your own replacement, maybe, that should be the mantra. So the other one we have, and we emailed right before the meeting, I think Andrea forwarded an email, there's a, a training through the North Dakota Planning Association next Thursday, I want to say at eleven-thirty, it's a Zoom-type thing if you want RSVP. I believe they're all, you guys are paid for if you, it's just an RSVP that you have to get, and I think they'll send the link to you. I, yeah, so free for you to sit in, and you can do that from your office or home or wherever. So with that, that's all we have.
No, I got a question.
Ms. Jermaticek?
Thank you. Excuse me, I, I apologize, I should have brought this up in three, one, I just have a quick question, two quick questions. Does the transit to bus service go on the, on the north side of Gateway? And the second thing, does it service the industrial park?
It does, well, it goes to Riverside, I believe, but that could have been one of those microtransits.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and look, and unfortunately Terry took off, but I.
I apologize for not bringing it up in three, one, I should have, so, but I'm just curious of those two things, that would have been questions I had.
Yeah, there, so if you look at the presentation, the microtransit, they talk about.
Yeah, I couldn't read it, it was so small, so, yeah.
It's a microtransit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll share it out.
I don't want to take up a lot of time, but, you know, I just was curious if, if we did those two things.
It looks like it does, Frank. It looks like, it looks like the seventeen line goes over there, right here.
Okay.
The orange line goes over there. As far as up north, it doesn't go any farther than Riverside.
Okay.
Yeah, here's the.
Yeah, okay, I can see it here.
And they'd serve it with micro, they, both of those two, they're looking to serve with microtransit, so to get a little bit further. So I think within their presentation, they talked a little bit about studying those a little bit further into the future as well, so this concept of a microtransit.
Thank you.
No, thanks, Frank.
If you need more info, we can get you in touch too with the MPO.
We got a motion to adjourn. Give me one second.
Second.
Is that right? Great. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.